Regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on May 24, 2022. Roll call, please.
Ms. Barbara Knutson?
Here.
Gross?
Here.
Quinn?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Quinn, seconded by Goodrich. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay, I have two proclamations this evening. We will start with a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas this month, we recognize the heritage and achievements of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders across our nation and in our local community. And whereas we recognize that Asians, Asian Americans are not a monolith, our AAPI neighbors enrich this community with the diversity of cultures, languages, faiths, and religions. And whereas we celebrate and honor the invaluable contributions that our AAPI neighbors make to our culture and to the arts, law, military, science, sports, and public service, including those who have served on the front lines as healthcare providers, first responders, teachers, and other essential workers. And whereas, in spite of the strengths shown and successes achieved, AAPI communities face systemic barriers to economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, and personal safety. And whereas we recognize the heightened fear felt by many AAPI communities in the wake of rising anti-Asian harassment and violence. And whereas we reflect on the tradition of leadership, resilience, and courage shown by AAPI communities and recommit to the struggle for AAPI equity. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of Coralville, do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Coralville, Iowa, and call upon the people of Coralville to learn more about the history of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. Signed on this 24th day of May 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. And we have some very special guests with us this evening. Would anybody like to come up and introduce themselves at the microphone? I want to thank council member Quinn for organizing our special guests this evening. We have individuals from various cultures and communities with us, and I really appreciate you all being here this evening. All right, would anybody like to speak to us? Go for it.
Thanks, Mayor Foster and the council. I'm a long-term resident here. My name is Ming Lohd. Thank you for inviting all of us. And I also want to say I'm very happy that our next generation is getting involved. I hope that we can work together and build a more diverse and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for all of your work in the community as well. Would anybody else like to speak to us? Okay, well, let's take a photo. I also wanted to let you all know that we are getting additional copies of the proclamation printed, and we'll get those out to all of you who would like one. All right, let's take a photo. Would you like to join us? Okay. Onto our second proclamation of the evening for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 100 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 230 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has an average of 281 gun deaths every year with a rate of 8.7 deaths per 100,000 people, Iowa has the 43rd highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide and domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 4, 2021, to recognize her 24th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Pendleton and other victims and their loved ones, which was inspired by her friends who asked classmates to wear orange because hunters wear orange, to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is the color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, mayor of the city of Coralville, proclaim the first day in June, June 3, 2022, as National Gun, I'm sorry, the first Friday in June, I read that incorrectly, proclaim the first Friday in June, June 3, 2022, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Further, I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic events of gun violence and honor and value human lives. Signed and sealed on this 24th day of May 2022, Megan Foster, Mayor. And I believe we have some representatives from Moms Demand Action here to speak with us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Foster and the Coralville City Council for this proclamation. My name is Rebecca Truskowski. I am a Coralville resident and mother of two. I joined Moms Demand Action shortly after Sandy Hook Elementary. As you have likely heard, there was a horrific shooting this afternoon at an elementary school in Texas that resulted in the death of 14 second and third graders and one teacher. Some will say that nothing has happened since Sandy Hook, and sometimes it seems that way. But I'm here to tell you that the movement to fight gun violence and this public health crisis has grown. We will continue to educate, raise awareness, organize, advocate, and rally for safer communities. We will not stop. This year, we invite the community to wear orange on June 3 and join us on Saturday, June 4 at 2:00 p.m. in Weatherby Park for our Wear Orange event. There will be speakers, activities for kids, an opportunity to place a remembrance rock in one of the park's gardens, and then we'll conclude with a peace walk through the neighborhood, past the mural on Broadway, into the diversity market in Pepperwood Plaza. Please join us as we remember the millions of lives taken or changed by gun violence and demand action in their honor. Together, we'll work together to make this community safe for everyone, from intimate partner violence to police violence, gun suicides, gun homicides, and unintentional shootings. We demand a bold plan that must address it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to us? All right, thank you for your work. I know that it's hard. I know that it's painful. And, you know, I just have to say, we work very closely, but my day job, I work at the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. We work very closely with the local Moms Demand Action chapter because we are seeing it in our work as well, an increase in homicides, an increase of individuals being threatened by firearms in domestic violence situations. So it is a very serious issue. Would you like to get a photo? Can we introduce the others that are with us? Yeah, would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Roy Emmerich of Coralville.
My name's Brett Swain, and I'm from Iowa City.
Well, thank you all for being here. There wouldn't be more, but we're having a proclamation regarding about North Liberty tonight. All right. Onto item number five, community comments. And this is the time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the comment time and the individual speaking time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to speak to us this evening? Yes, come on up. State your name, please.
Hi, my name is Beth Cameraman, and I live at 802nd Street. That is point number eight on tonight's agenda, Lot B Heritage Estates, the rezoning of open space to low-density residential use. As a steward of this open space for the past 12 years, I understand that it's floodplain, and that's why it is open space. I have restored this area to native prairie, and we now have ducks, frogs, praying mantis, various butterflies, fireflies, and more kinds of bees than I could count. Over the past 12 years, this open space has gone from undesignated to designated classifications by the DNR in recreational uses as A2 designation, as well as being designated for aquatic life uses as a BWW3. This is open space because it is floodplain. And after the 2008 flood, this property was brought up to code to meet the floodplain restrictions by the property owner, which is how it allowed this particular parcel to be zoned in the first place as open space as opposed to floodplain. As such, this parcel of land being right next to where the floodplain is specifically designed to end, once the land was updated to meet the floodplain restrictions in 2008, it afforded that particular parcel the same protections and stipulations laid out in the Water Planning Resource Act passed by the Congress. It also falls under the DNR's Environmental Protection Title 19 Flood Plan Development, which is floodplain or floodway development when approval is required. It is the EPA number 567. It's chapters 70 through 75. This parcel has been designed as a swale to keep heavy rains from overwhelming Second Street. Any changes to this parcel will most likely result in a high probability of nuisance flooding at Second and Sixth, Second Street and Sixth Avenue anytime it rains. And when there's heavy rains, the flooding will be significantly worse than nuisance flooding and most likely close that part of the road. We've spent 12 years, well over $10,000, and hundreds and hundreds of hours diverting water from the strip into this particular space. As years have passed, we've had to do more to divert more water as development on Fifth Avenue has created more concrete and more runoff that isn't being absorbed anywhere. It's flowing onto Second Street. At this point in time, there's 14 rhubarb plants. There's eight fruit trees. On the water side of the berm, we have enforced 80 feet by six foot with two layers of railroad ties so that over the years that the berm does not continue to sink. As I previously mentioned, I believe this parcel of land is protected as floodplain. In such, it would fall under the jurisdiction of the Army Corps of Engineers as to any zoning changes or restrictions. Having said that, I implore the city attorney to examine the constraints of jurisdiction regarding the rezoning of 802nd Street, point number eight, your heritage. I would also ask the city to make public the hydrological studies required by the EPA and enter them into public record prior to rezoning this area. I don't claim to know everything about water or much about laws and the zoning restrictions or what your job is. The only thing I know is that if this is allowed to be rezoned from open space to anything else, the Coralville Strip is going to flood. It'll be nuisance flooding every time it rains, and it'll be substantial flooding with heavy rains. At this point in time, if you go back there, and it's right next to Dairy Queen, if you go back there today, dry as a bone, not a drop of water. But it gets up to three feet deep back there, and that is what absorbs all, a swale is the big space that starts the water running into your flood system. If you look at the city's flood mitigation projects, you'll find that the $450,000 that the city of Coralville has spent ends right next to this property. I found a place to live. I'm not against, you know, things moving forward. I look forward to seeing, you know, what this company from Texas is going to do, and it has to be improvement from what's there now. It's old, it's ugly. It's just my concern that the plans that they've laid out for this particular parcel of land is the minimum requirements to maintain this flood mitigation effort that I've spent 10 years embarking on, and I do feel that it is definitely worth another look. And I would like to apologize to the city council for only coming before you at this third and final reading. As I'm a resident of the building, being the steward of the land, I was only informed that this was happening five weeks ago. And, you know, the building's set for demolition, which is fine. There's plenty of problems with the building. Very noisy place to live. Plenty of reasons I'm very happy to move. I'm just here to inform the city of the possible ramifications this decision could have. And I'd also like to point out, the final thing I would like to point out, is that if anybody who's a resident of Coralville, all you need to do is look, and you can see that this 802nd Street property is the low point of the Coralville Strip. It doesn't get any lower anywhere on the Coralville Strip. And we, the property that I'm discussing is also deals with the affluent coming off the bank. Like I said, I don't claim to be an expert, just a concerned citizen. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to us this evening?
Hi there.
Hi.
Judy Clinton from 945 Applewood Court. And I had no idea this was going to be such an auspicious proclamation night. Good work, council. And I just have to say that as a recipient of Beth's organic vegetables for the last 10 years, having a local farmer at our market, I think is such a privilege, and they've done such a good job taking care of that land. I think what I have to tell the council is that I was very disappointed with the decision about ex-councilwoman Jill Dodd's removal. It doesn't make sense to me, given that there's something going on with her partner. Jill has done such a great job when she's been on this council. She's been so careful. So I was very disappointed, and I guess I heard belatedly. Usually, I listen to the live stream of the meeting, and I guess I didn't hear that night about your decision. So I just wanted to let you know that I think she's done a great job, and I think it's too bad that she's been held accountable for something that didn't involve her, and we don't know the outcome of that other thing. Any questions? I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Judy.
I've been thinking about this for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Would anyone else like to speak to us this evening about an item? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Molly Miller, and I am a board member of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County and an employee at Hills Bank. I just wanted to come and, on behalf of the Housing Trust Fund, and thank the city of Coralville for all the support that you have provided to the Housing Trust Fund over the years and for your consideration of designating the $200,000 of ARPA funds to the Housing Trust Fund. We are very grateful for the support and appreciate the collaboration and look forward to working towards our mission. I just wanted to share a little bit of information about our organization for those of you who might not know much about it. Our mission is to promote and support affordable housing in Johnson County. Our vision is to provide access to safe and decent and affordable housing for all in Johnson County. In fiscal year 2021, we invested $2.1 million, leveraging 16.8 million, so in other words, $1 for every $8. And in our fiscal 2021 awards, 95% of the awards were to households below 60% or below the area median income. We were able to award to 77 households, 134 individuals. 52% were female-headed households, 36% to individuals of color, and 26% to individuals with a disability. From 2004, from our inception of our organization to 2021, we have awarded $11.6 million to 909 households. So again, I just want to thank you for your consideration of designating those funds, and we look forward to working together in the future.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for your work on that board. Would anyone else like to speak to us this evening?
Sorry, should I have done this earlier? I'd like to invite all the Asian community members to come up, say their name, and tell us where they're from or where their parents are from. I do have a commitment, so I have to leave afterwards. I want to give everybody an opportunity. So I'll start with my family. I'm Ming Lohd. I'm originally from Shanghai, China.
Anish, would you like to come?
My name is Anish Loong, and I'm half Chinese, half Indian.
My name is Anjuli Loth, and I'm also half Chinese and half Indian.
In case you were wondering where the Indian part comes from. I am Rami Loth, been in Coralville for 25 great years and originally from India, brought up in East Africa, mainly Kenya. Met a Chinese lady, sweetie-speaking Chinese lady in college, married her in Australia. So that's the little gist of our family.
Anybody else want to introduce themselves?
My name is Kevi Huen. I was born and raised here, but my mom is city council Huen, and she and my daughter from Vietnam.
Hi, my name is Omega Denzel, and I'm from the Philippines. I came here when I was 13, went to West High, went to the university, and now I'm a par educator at West High.
That's my kid, Annika Wen.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is Demian Kim. I'm from Chicago, but both my parents are from South Korea.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ayush Lamso. I was born in Madison, Wisconsin, but my parents are both from Nepal, so pretty cool place.
Hi, my name is Prisha Kendall, and both of my, well, one of my parents is from India and the other is from Nepal.
My name is Nirvan Candell, and my mom is from India and my dad is from Nepal.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pretiva Sharma Kendall. I'm a nurse. I'm from India, and my husband is from Nepal. We just visited India and Nepal like we came back last week. So this is so nice that Ming invited us here. It's very nice to see everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm so glad that everyone was able I'm so glad that everyone was able to introduce themselves. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak to us this evening?
Um, is this the appropriate time to talk about the council vacancy?
Yes, it is. Yes. Yep, yep.
All right, um, so first of all, I would like to um, thank former councillor Dodd's for putting the community above herself by submitting her willful resignation. I think that left, leaves the focus on city business and not personal matters. Um, the main reason I'm here tonight is regarding the vacant council seat and comments from the last meeting, which I found to be disturbing for several reasons. I understand that the majority of you feel that it is important for both the vacancy to be filled by someone who is elected by the people and for the vacancy to be filled quickly so council can conduct its business with a reasonable quorum. To that end, my suggestion is this, pass a resolution calling for a special election and also giving the mayor temporary voting powers until the seat is filled. The mayor is an elected official and represents the interests of Coralville, Coralville residents as much as any councillor. This is entirely possible and more importantly, it is the ethical path forward. I imagine city staff probably will give you reasons why this is not possible, but I, it, it's entirely the power of the council to have this be. Um, I would like to also address points made at the last meeting by councillor Goodrich. She said that she had good candidates in mind to fill the vacancy and she didn't mind that if they run again in November twenty twenty-three, that their appointed incumbency may give them an advantage. This mindset is shady and represents uh, the worst of Coralville politics that as a lifelong resident of Coralville, I've, I've observed. Um, Coralville's decision-makers should not be, should not be determined by backroom deals, but by the votes of constituents. In conclusion, please have a special election and do whatever it takes to make that happen. Personally, like I said, I think that giving the mayor temporary voting privileges will circumvent any concerns brought to you by city staff and I hope that is what you will do. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, would anyone else like to speak with us this evening? Okay, moving on to item number six, uh, vacancy on the city council. Um, this action, it will uh, determine how we intend to fill the vacancy for, for the, the um, open position on the city council. All right, could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution of intent to appoint person to fill a city council vacancy introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by.
Oh, second.
Seconded by Huen. All right, let's have a discussion on this item. What are your thoughts?
Actually, um, mayor, if um, if city clerk or Kelly could lay out what it, you know, what the process would look like for the general public, I think that would be the appropriate first step.
Sure.
For this discussion.
Yeah, Kelly, do you want to share some of the?
Um, sure. Based on our, your discussion at the last work session, we prepared a draft uh, uh, application based on the boards and commission application with a couple of minor adjustments. And the intent was that that would be um, uh, the public, general public would get a notices of that through various means of um, notification and that there would be approximately a fourteen-day time period that people could express their interest in the position. And then it would be up to the council to review those applications and decide whether you wanted to do interviews or not and then could make a decision um, thereafter. So it would probably be at least the first, the second meeting in June before all that could happen. And before that, uh, the general public would have the right for a petition for an election. Um, and that notice has been sent and that would, or would be sent and that allows for fourteen days for people to fill out a, a notification that they would like to have an election through a petition. And I believe it takes approximately three hundred and ninety-eight signatures.
And we have quite a bit of leeway as to how the appointment could occur. Can you talk a little bit about, about? We, we have a lot of, of what that would involve because we actually do have a lot of say about how the appointment can happen or what that process is.
Yeah, I mean, you can, there's, the process would be strictly up to you. Um, interviewing, uh, an interview process either by the full council, by end, uh, by a committee appointed by the council. Um, so yeah, you have all the latitude of how that decisions are and the decision is made.
And we would be able to do those, we would be able to have those interviews in full view of the public so that?
Yes.
It's not, um, that way the public could at least see the process and then would still have the option of getting the signatures.
That's correct.
And just, you know, I think I was on record of supporting the election and it sounds like that's not where things headed. But just the earliest would be if there was an election, that would be August. That's the soonest an election can happen because of county.
Yes, the county auditor's office is the one that sets that.
And then just to what the mayor was saying, I guess I just feel like for, for me to support this, I gotta just know kind of what, I feel like it's chicken in the, or the cart and the horse, like I need to know what the process is going to be before I support the, do an appointment without knowing what the process is. Because I, for me, there needs to be the, you know, the, what are the candidates, whoever those would, are, would be, you know, coming in a form, taking questions from us as council members. Now that, to me, the format, I know there's some things about questions, but there just needs a little more depth and that, which is, I'm not saying ask me on the forum, but I think there just needs, needs to be an opportunity to ask some questions.
I agree, I agree. Um, and I think that's one of the things that makes this, why we have a lot, you know, we have to be very clear about if we, if we do go this route. We have to be very clear about what that process is, making sure that it is as transparent as possible. Um, and I know that we can't, we cannot write in the stipulation that the appointed individual does not run again, but I think that should, I would advocate that that should factor heavily into our decision-making. Um, and that should be a question that is asked of, of anyone that applies. Because I do feel that it would be an unfair advantage to appoint someone and then have someone run in the next election. I know that we can't, there's nothing we could do to prevent that, but that would factor into my decision-making. And I know you feel very strongly too about that, Mitch.
I think my point would be that um, we want to encourage anyone. And I think that's where I was coming from, not that I was choosing, but that I could think of a few people that would like to fill out an application for an appointment. I don't take that um, lightly. I think there is, um, I'm not sure that there will be that many people in our community and I want to encourage people to um, you know, the, the application will be on the website. It'll be available here and at the library and so on. Anyone can fill out an application and that's my point of view.
Sure, absolutely. And anyone can petition too.
Correct.
For, I mean, and that's, that's.
With their, yeah, the three hundred and some um, signatures.
What I want to make clear is that, you know, I want to make sure the public understands that, you know, if, if we go the route of appointment, that there are still options for the public to weigh in. And that the, that it's, it's not just a um, us having the final say. The public will always have the final say.
Right.
In that, even if we do go the route of an appointment. They can always petition.
We felt it important that we fill the seat so that we can continue on with city business and so on.
Did you have a comment? Hi.
Um, I just want to clarify uh, the point that Dan Koppo made earlier um, with staff. Is it correct that the mayor can have the po, the voting power to keep city business going?
I don't, um, the city attorney can address it, but I don't believe that's correct. The um, state law is very clear on.
Our former government, the mayor does not vote and the ordinance is specifically spelled out that you do not vote either. So that would not be something that can be changed as fast as you'd have an election or anything like that. Changing, yeah, so.
So it is in our ordinance that the mayor.
And our form of government, we have a, we don't, we have a different form than Iowa City does. Obviously, their mayor votes and is elected by the council.
No, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Yes.
Just, just, uh, sorry, I guess it's, I'm going to take it off. Uh, just, I guess I'm just trying my hands to around the, or head around the, the idea that, and I've, you know, even though I'm the longest person on here, it's, we've only just done this once. And I'm just, I'm confused why, you know, for highest position, it was shit, there was less of a term left and we had an election. Here, there's more of a term left. Or a point, so that's, that was my thing, just because, just because of the duration of what's remaining on the term. Um, but I, I can be, if, if I'm assured that there will be, you know, an open, public forum process uh, where there's a chance to say, you know, for folks to identify what their intentions are. Because I, yeah, I get that by code law, whatever, so we cannot stipulate where you run again. But the school board, that's, that's just a threshold they've always used. And I, I agree with that threshold also. I just, I just think that there needs to be, you know, there is the power of incumbency and I think that power of incumbency needs to be earned by the voters, not by an appointment.
You know, I sit here because of a special election. Um, I am well aware of that. Um, and I, you know, I'm aware that that the process that put me here. Um, and just like to Mitch's point, it is a much shorter term to fill than the vacant seat right now. I, I want it to be fair and transparent. Um, I also know that, you know, if we appoint, it is also a transparency process. Because like Lori said, anyone in the community can put forward an application. And so people who look like me do have a chance to sit right here if they choose to do so. Um, what does, what the appointment does is that it's eliminate, well, I don't want to say it eliminate, but um, it's um, it gives the people who want to do public service a chance to get to that quicker than having to run a campaign, wait for the election to begin their public service um, work. So where I'm sitting, I see that there is transparency in both option. Um, you know, having a special elec, election also allow anyone in the community to put themselves forward to fill this seat. Um, as a council, with the way that our ordinance of our city work, we cannot conduct this business with, um, you know, without a quorum.
Quorum.
So when we make the decision, we don't make it lightly. We really weigh all the pro, all the con, the timeline of each of the option. Um, what it does, each of the option, how it prevent us from carry on city business because the people put us here to work for the people. And we can't work for the people if we can, if we cannot conduct business. So that where I'm coming from, when I weigh the decision of whether to have a special election or the appointment. Um, and just like Mitch said, we cannot spitul, you know, spitulate if, of, whether the, the, the person who we appoint will not run in the next election. Because yes, it is un, you know, unfair to other candidate who come into the race. So that is where I'm, I'm sitting.
Yeah, and I think.
I'm not against ha, sorry.
You, no, Lori, you go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I've been for the petition, but I'm not against having an election in August, which is a financial drain on our, um, on our city. But if we can all be certain that we can be here at city council meetings in order to continue business until August, until, yeah, that time.
I think what you're addressing is just, and this is where I think, I, I agree with you, Mitch, about the, the, you're, I, you're, I think you're right about the point of like, why did we do it for that and not this? I think a big part of it was um, timing. And I think these situations are often unique, which is why it's not always apples to apples to apples every time. Um, because I very much do believe in elections. I very much do feel strongly that, you know, that, that's always going to be my preferred method. The, the timing is one of the things that concerned me. Just because it's summer, there's, I'm going to be gone. The, uh, Lori, and we're, we're going to be, we're, we're all going to be gone. And there are things that we cannot do without a full slate. There are things that we've already had to put on hold because we're not going to have four members. And I, I do worry a little bit about an August election. I mean, I would, I, I think it would be fine.
About that, that a lot of people are gone.
Yeah, I, but I do think, I, that's, I do think it would be fine. So that was.
In the community, I mean.
Yes, yeah, I still think it would be fine, but I think um, that was one of the, the reasons why I think an appointment would not be entirely inappropriate right now. But I would want all of those conditions on it if I were, you know, to have my way. That it would be an open and transparent process, that we do interviews in full view of the public, that we make very clear that if the public is not happy with the choice or comfortable with the choice that we make, that there's still the option of an election. Um, all of those things.
I'm not sure how you could do that.
Do what?
Actually, the appointment would occur after the petition period was up.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't happen after you made.
I thought we discussed that we, we could close the petition. Maybe I misunderstood that.
And the petition would close before, so the decision.
Before we interview.
Yeah, before.
Oh, I, okay, so I, I apologize. That's my mix-up. Because I thought that we could make the appointment and then extend the petition time passed when the appointment is made.
No, the state code is where it's outlines the fourteen days.
Okay. So the petition would happen first, would happen bef, okay. So I, I'm sorry, I had that mixed up in my, in my head because I, yeah. But still, it's, the option is still there.
Can you, I'm confused now, I gotta be honest.
Yes, so I, I thought that we could make the appointment and then close the window for the petition after the appointment was made.
Okay.
But it's the other way around.
If we vote yes tonight for that we're going to appoint, the petitioners have two weeks to get four hundred signatures.
Yeah, exactly.
And I would be glad to sign it if there's enough support for that. This is a very difficult decision. I think it's, for me, driven by part money and in part timing. And that when I started to hear that we may not have a quorum, this is a busy city. I mean, we, missing two weeks of, of this, you know, could be a big deal. You know, or, you know, having to go four weeks between meetings instead of two. And there were a couple of weeks that we'd already identified, or a couple of meetings, I should say, that we may not have a quorum. Now we may be able to work around that and get through it and have an election and be fine. But that was a driving force for me and with the understanding that if people wanted to petition to have an election, that would be okay with any call of us, absolutely.
We have though in the past, like around holidays and things, we have moved our meetings.
Yeah.
When we haven't had quorums, like we've.
We could do that.
We've done that before, so it's not as if it's.
Okay, yeah.
That's what I'm just trying to, you know, and I, I don't know, I just. Again, highest vacancy was in the summer, and the election, I think, was in September, October.
September.
Into September, but people are back in September, people are.
I know June, July are different, yeah, I just.
Yeah.
But there is early voting, I mean.
Yeah, that's true.
So people can vote ahead, it's back on.
So what, just Mayor, what, the stipulations that you've heard then on a point, what can you, I'm just curious, like what have you heard tonight?
You mean, what, can you clarify?
Well, you said, so you said.
Oh, oh, yes, I understand.
So make sure we're on the same page.
Interviews in full view of the public. And, uh, making sure that we are sharing far and wide the opportunity to apply. Making clear, you know, and, and being clear that while we cannot say, or have the, the running as a condition of, or the, the not running in the next elec- election as a condition of the appointment, I think that that should be clear for those that value that, made clear in the decision.
Again, just some, clear, so if we vote tonight, there's two weeks that someone can apply for the job. And then when we would have an open forum, whatever, we would just set a date for when that would be?
Yeah, you could set that date, cause it would have to be a.
Would it be a special meeting, or would it?
It could be, yeah.
Okay. And then is it, is the process of the decision, the council votes at that time, do we have time to?
It's, that's up to you.
Excuse me, cut.
So let's say if we have ten community member apply, we would have to conduct ten interview to make it.
No, that's up to us.
That's up to you.
We, we could look at it and say, we want to interview these four or five. But we'd have to do that in an open meeting for on the, for on the committee.
I'm not, I know we.
We talked, uh, two weeks ago about not all of us being on the committee.
I, I think it needs to be all of us.
Okay.
I don't, I, that would be, and we can make that decision, right? That's just how the county does it, is that they have a committee.
Yep.
I think it needs to be all of, would need to be all.
The county is a state law.
Okay.
That's done by committee.
Yep.
But the committee does not have to be the council, right?
You can, it's, it's up to the council, you can have the full council, if you have a quorum, it's gotta be an open, it's gotta be an open.
Right.
Open meeting, so, like Kelly said, it's up to the council how they want to proceed with that.
When do we have to make that decision? In two weeks, or before that?
I would probably, first of all, we'll, we'll publish the notice, and then you'll know, you might not even have to go through, if there's a petition filed, then you won't have to go through any of this process. I think you wait for that period to end, and if there's no petition, then you could set the, set that, uh, plan in motion, what you want to do. I think that's why Kelly said probably not until at least the second meeting in June that an appointment would probably happen.
Yeah, I guess I'm just gonna, you know, my gut is probably to vote no on this, I just want to be honest with that, and that's kind of where I was two weeks ago, and I probably haven't been moved to the point on that. But just want to be frank and let people know where I'm at.
Well, it is interesting that if we, what you were just stating, then an election would be in August. If we're not doing anything till the end of June, then we just have one month before the election, I, yeah.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, if there was an appointment, when would that person actually come onto council and take over?
As soon as you appoint them.
Soon as the appointment is.
Okay.
You can make the appointment, they immediately get sworn in.
It could be a month, probably. I think realistically, it could be a month, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So just for the general public, um, information for the general public, so if we go forward with the resolution tonight to do a, um, appointment, if it take effect tonight, it will be fourteen day for the general public to print forth a petition if they wanted to have a special election. So that mean that they have until June seven, and that mean we still have to wait until June seven for that period to close in order to consider any application. And in order to move forward with the, um, interview process. One thing I wanted to note is that appointment will not cost taxpayer money. A special election will ca- cost taxpayer money. That, that's just a fact that I wanted to put out there for the general public. So a special election costs around twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar, and that was Travis, the county.
Auditor.
Auditor gave us that information, and I wanted to share that information with the public. Again, if we appoint, we would be able to fill the seat, the, at the latest is the end of June. Wouldn't you all say? And then if we do a special election, we will not be able to fill the seat until August sixteen. So there's the difference there too. Regardless of how we vote tonight, I would encourage the general public, community member, to reach out to us, council, mayor, clerk, um, staff, and let us know what you want. Because we're here to serve you. You put us here to work for you, so let us work for you. What do you want?
So here's just a theoretical, so if we, the petition closed on the seventh?
Yes, two weeks from today, if we, if we vote yes for the resolution to go forward tonight.
Could we even say that then we'd have a forum on the ninth, and then that person would start on the fourteenth?
Possibly, yes. Yes.
Cause if we did that, people know that if you don't show up for the forum, I mean, I'll say I wouldn't support anyone that doesn't show up to answer questions. So you'd have to be on the, here on the ninth. Cause otherwise, if it's late June or into July, I just don't see what the point is personally of having the election.
But I, yeah, that was my point.
Or any other thoughts, anybody else have anything they want to weigh in on, or need time to think or share ideas? You feel comfortable, ready to vote?
Could be our first split vote.
Well, it is, it is, that happens sometimes, and that's okay.
What are the bylaws for a two-two vote?
Two-two right now would fail.
Would fail, okay.
We'll go, we'll go back to the board on board.
We'll go back to the board.
In two weeks.
Is that too late to have the election in August? What's the timetable for that?
Uh, there is.
It's, you gotta have like sixty-some days notice, so it may be too late for the August.
Yeah, we have to let the auditor's office know, and then there's also the timeframe of the sixty days from, if you don't make it a, a decision, it goes to election anyway. So there's a whole series of.
They have to publish the ballot and all that stuff.
Yeah.
If, is a resolution, is a yes, no vote?
Yes.
The, the, the yes would be the yeses to appoint the person, but, appoint the person and then start the fourteen day process.
Okay, thank you.
And to, and would that start immediate, that would to highest point?
The publication would be tomorrow, so it would start for tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
So that would be June eighth.
Okay.
That the general public have.
Yes.
To, um, petition with three hundred and ninety-six signature.
Correct.
Okay, are we ready to, ready to go?
Let's see where it goes.
Okay. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Gross.
No.
Quinn.
Yay.
Goodrich.
Yes.
Knutson.
Yes.
Resolution is approved with three ayes and one no. All right, then thank you everyone for your discussion and thoughts on that. I appreciate all of that. All right, on to item number seven, Lot One, Red Hawk subdivision, part three. Now, we have two parts to this item. We will start with item A. This is a rezoning to a commercial planned unit development two district that will allow for a Dunkin' Donuts. So item A, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash one thousand ten, excuse me, one thousand two, and ordinance amending the Corleville zoning ordinance, the same being ordinance number twenty-twenty dash one thousand nine. As previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corleville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Lot One, Red Hawk subdivision, part three, from CPUD one, commercial planned unit development one district, to CPUD two, commercial planned unit development two district, introduced for adoption. Third and final consideration by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final questions or comments on this item? All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson. Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolu-, or ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item B, um, the resolution, please.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot One, Red Hawk subdivision, part three, Corleville, Iowa, introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or comments on item B? Roll call please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eight, Lot B Heritage Estates. This is the third consideration of an ordinance that would change the land use map for a property located south of Interstate eighty and north of Thirteenth Street and east of Fourteenth Street from open space to low-density residential use. The ordinance, please.
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash one thousand three, and ordinance amending the Corleville community plan to reflect certain property generally known as Lot B Heritage Estates, Corleville, Iowa, to be designated low-density residential use in place of open space use. Introduced for a third and final consideration by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any final questions or comments on this item?
We had some very thoughtful comments tonight about resolution eight, and I don't think it had anything to do with this particular resolution, though, just to clarify that.
It was a different item number.
Yeah, is it a different item? I didn't see it anywhere on here.
That's why I was looking at the, the paper, but.
Yeah. Just one, yeah.
Yeah, but I, I think that that's.
What's that? I think she said.
I think that it's, it's a different item number, but.
Yeah, was that last week's?
Maybe.
I'm not even sure I saw anything on.
Dave, you have anything you'd like to add?
Issue that Ms. Kamala Miller was discussing did not have anything to do with Lot B Heritage Estates. The subject property for Lot B Heritage Estates is actually between Thirteenth Street and Interstate eighty.
Great, that's what I thought. Thank you, thank you very much.
No worries.
All right, any other questions or comments on this besides that? All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item number nine is water and solid waste rates. Um, this is the third and final consideration of this ordinance that will change the water rates for the minimum single-family residential customer, um, the minimum commercial or industrial customer, and additional usage charges for all customers in the next four fiscal years. And again, this information, all of that information can be found, um, in the, the memo, in the, in the packet, if you'd like to take a look at those, those rate changes. Um, can we have the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two-two dash one thousand four, and ordinance amending chapter one oh seven of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Corleville of twenty-eleven, as previously amended by changing water and solid waste collection fees. Introduced for third and final consideration by councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any final comments or questions on item number nine? All right, roll call please.
Councilperson Gross.
Present, oh, my gosh, aye. Geez, sorry.
Aye.
Long day.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye. Long week already.
Did everybody vote?
Yes, everybody voted, yeah.
And we're all here too.
All right, good, we're all here.
Yes, we are all here.
All right. Uh, our ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Item number ten, here's another, uh, item where we have two parts. Um, the first is a resolution for a twenty-eight E agreement that outlines the obligations, uh, that we have for the Clear Creek Amana School District twenty-eight E agreement. Um, this one pertains to the construction of street and utility improvements around the new elementary school. Could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a twenty-eight E agreement with the Clear Creek Amana Community School District regarding the site development for the new school site in Corleville, Iowa. Introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments on this item? Kelly, do you have any other information on this?
Nope, uh, the Clear Creek School District, um, school board has already approved both of these agreements.
Great, fantastic. All right, roll call please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. On to item B. Um, this twenty-eight E agreement would be for the shared use of the new elementary school building and grounds to operate a before and after-school program and to provide general recreational programming at the school site. Um, could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving a twenty-eight E agreement with the Clear Creek Amana Community School District regarding shared use of the new elementary school to be constructed in the city of Corleville, Iowa. Is introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. All right, and we have Sherry Proud here, our director of Parks and Rec, to lead off our discussion.
Thanks, Mayor Foster. Um, this is exciting, this is our first partnership school with Clear Creek Amana School District. We have three, um, elementary school partnerships with the Iowa City Community School District, and all of them have been built in neighborhoods and function as essentially mini rec centers for those neighborhoods. Um, I, I thought it would be interesting for the public at home to see, um, the layout of how this, um, will happen there at the school. Um, entry comes in here, um, you have the choice to go into the gymnasium, have access to restrooms off the gymnasium as well as off the hallway, and then, um, we have access to the commons for programming. We have a storage off the gym, storage off the commons, as well as our own designated classroom and our own designated kitchenette here at the Clear Creek Amana School District, and, um, a couple of reasons for that, the kitchen that they, unlike the Iowa City's Community School District, they, um, cook all of their food at this elementary school and did not want, um, to have, uh, the two entities coexisting in one kitchen, so we separated out our kitchen. And then the classroom, this is going to be a larger school than any of the other schools we've been involved in, and we wanted to make sure that we could, um, adequately provide the space as well as the different types of spaces, quiet space versus, um, game space versus gym space for our students, where we do a lot of, we do a lot of STEM, um, after-school enrichment, we do a lot of mind time, a lot of homework, and want to make sure we have the appropriate spaces there within the common space. Um, we will run, um, before and after-school program, which we estimate to serve between a hundred and ten and a hundred and thirty students. Um, we will run summer camp and, um, open gyms, general recreation programming, just like we would at the other, um, schools, and this school. And this school, for those at home, this is located in the Corleville West Land Use Area. Off of, it will be south of Oakdale Boulevard and west of Jones, did I get that right? Okay. And so we're really excited about entering this partnership. The city will pay three hundred thousand dollars for these, the spaces in green to be built and to be dedicated to the city of Corleville. And we will staff this with a, with recreation staff member who will also schedule the gym space as well as the outdoor spaces there at this school. So, we focus on the out-of-school time and the school district focuses on the in-school time.
Fantastic, thank you for that overview. Any questions for Sherry?
How many square feet of that green space is there?
A thousand twenty-five, is that correct?
Yeah.
One question I had, I just wanted, and I think this would be good clarification for folks that are watching at home. Can you provide just a little overview of the escalating, the escalating clause as far as the cost of the project?
Yes, if you, so basically, we had agreed on three hundred thousand, so this is one percent of the entire project, if I remember our discussion correctly. So, if they were over, if they were over by a large amount, our cost would only go up one. It's only one percent of their, their cost here. So, if it was three million over, we'd have to thirty thousand dollars. So, and obviously, they have to accept the project for every, for that to, you know, kick in. So, that's what the escalator clause says.
Yeah, and I think just for the general public to understand that they will be the, they will be the entity that accepts all of the bids and that.
Yes.
We, we have that in there so that we're not having, if they go dramatically over.
Yeah, and since a bid like this is one bid for the building, it's impossible to.
Yeah.
So, that's how, that's how we got to that clause, it's just, it's not like a road project where I can say, oh, the pipe costs this and the street costs that. So, that's what we agreed upon, I think that, I think it's fair for both sides and a way to spread out the risk there. And obviously, if it goes too far over, my guess is they're going to go back to the drawing board, but that's a, that's a, they will be doing the whole bidding on this whole thing.
Fantastic, thank you for that. Any other questions or?
Is the classroom at all, used at all during school time?
The classroom will also serve as the office space for the staff member who's assigned out at this location instead of doing a separate office space. And, you know, there could be opportunities to possibly, you know, have meetings with, with that staff member and/or something going on. As long as that's okay with the school district.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, thank you, Sherry, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson. Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eleven is an option agreement. This option is for Six and Sixth Developers to purchase the driveway that comes from Highway six to the back of the eight oh eight on Fifth Property for the development of the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Highway six. This resolution is necessary to qualify for a workforce housing tax credit. Can we have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an option agreement with Six and Sixth Developers LLC. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or discussion on this item?
I asked for a little clarification, how much the purchase price was, and it was zero. And I said, that's fine with me.
It's part of their development agreement so that we, development can be. Develop the way we'd like. Plus, there's a storm sewer right next to it anyway, so it's not really.
Yeah, it'd be nice to see that property develop, though, it's been sitting there, how long?
Long time.
Long time.
Been at least since the two thousand eight, well, actually, it was flooded before that, so it would have been before two thousand and eight.
Yeah.
Fantastic, all right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number twelve, workforce housing tax credits. This grant is for the Sixth and Sixth Phase One on the North, Phase, Phase One on the northwest corner of Sixth Avenue and Highway six, with the city pledging in-kind support of a thousand dollars per residential unit for a hundred units. Can we get the resolution, please?
Resolution of support of the application of Six and Sixth Developers LLC for funding via the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program and pledging city monies for the same. Introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion on this item?
I guess I'd like a little explanation, I'm not that familiar with workforce housing tax credits. Is it along the lines of affordable housing targeted for?
No, this is a state program that has, it's really designed to get more housing developed, and it can be anywhere from single-family to multifamily, which in this particular case would be multifamily. The state of Iowa just changed the amount of dollars that you can spend per unit and get the tax credit. Now, I think, oh, it was two hundred and sixty. Two eighteen? No, it was higher than. Anyway, it's, it's somewhere over two hundred thousand dollars per unit that the developer can spend in actual cost to build that unit. There is no income limits or rental income, rental limitations, or it can be owner-occupied as well. But the state has made a determination that if you spend that much money or less per unit, then they classify, that's what they classify as affordable units. We've had several projects, the Fifth Street, eight oh eight projects on Fifth Street, Watts's development on First Avenue, and then some, excuse me, Hodges down in the Iowa River Landing have all qualified for that. And it's becoming a bigger issue right now because the cost of, cost of building housing has become more expensive. One of the things the state requires, and that's what they view, you have to provide a minimum of a thousand dollars per unit support from the community, and that's how they, you know, guarantee that there's support from the community for the project. And so that's what they've asked for a minimum.
Is it the Iowa Finance Authority that sets up the levels?
Yeah. No, in this case, it's the Iowa Department of Economic Development, not the Iowa Finance Authority.
And if, this is just the applicant, just because we apply doesn't mean that.
Yeah, there's usually about twice as many applications as there is funding available. Although the legislature last year did allocate significant more funds over the next five years, starting last year. And in the, before, it was a first-come, first-served program. They've changed that now to a competitive program.
Okay, and so what we're getting out of it is new housing.
Additional housing.
But not, not affordable housing necessarily, nothing to do with that.
It could be, but it's not necessarily the case, yes. But you do know, for example, you can't build four hundred thousand dollar condos with this money because you wouldn't be eligible for the grant.
Yeah, two hundred thousand for a studio apartment, though, is a pretty nice studio apartment.
Yeah, it would be.
I mean, so there's no size limits on how that, how big that unit has to be, which seems a little odd to me.
Yeah. I think they tried to make it as non-complicated as possible. So, to really encourage people to build more housing. And that was the original goal for this, is build more housing in the state of Iowa because that's a major detriment to the, to the state in general.
So, this developer will get how much money from the state?
They can get up to, well, it depends on if it's a brownfield or a grayfield, it's, I believe, is it twenty? Yeah.
Total.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And that's as a tax credit, so then they have to sell those, which you're not going to sell the credits for a hundred percent either.
Right.
Unless you can use it yourself.
Right, and is this in our TIF?
Yes.
So, what we would get long-term is that value in our TIF?
Yep.
So, that's our ROI, if you want to think about it that way.
And in this particular.
In addition to additional housing, of course.
Yeah, plus, we would also, in this particular case, get a lot redeveloped that is, we've had interest in for a long, long time.
I mean, theoretically, this would help, like, I think you alluded to this, this would help with the cost, right?
Yes.
It's just, I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be like affordable housing like we would like to see, but it's a way of controlling the cost of the building and the construction costs that, which would increase the price if these credits weren't available.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
I do believe we have at least one other developer, if not two, that'll be asking to, for our support as well.
Not on this property, though.
Not, not on this property.
This guy owns this property, right?
Or has the option, one or the other.
Yeah, I think, I think he posted this earlier about zoning something, if I remember right, but.
The developer has to have control of the land before they can apply.
Which is why we gave him that.
Yeah.
Why he purchased that strip.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. All right, there we are, my papers are out of order, I think. Item number thirteen, water plant filter media replacement. This project would replace the filter media at the water plant. The public hearing for this would be on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and bids are due June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing for the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract. Ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting. All for the water plant filter media replacement. Introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number fourteen, well fifteen improvements. This project will drill a permanent well fifteen and test the well to confirm both the quality and quantity of water it can produce. The public hearing will be on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and bids are due on July twenty-third, I'm sorry, on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution setting a public hearing for the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract. Ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the well fifteen improvements. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Questions or discussion on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number fifteen, wastewater treatment plant biosolids transfer pump replacement. This project will replace pumps and associated equipment that transfer thickened wastewater sludge to the sludge storage tank at the wastewater treatment plant, where it is held for future application to agricultural fields. Two pumps will be included for system redundancy, and the public hearing on this item will be June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and bids are due June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Resolution, please.
Resolution setting a public hearing for the plan specifications, estimate of cost, and form of contract. Ordering bids, setting a date for the receiving of said bids, and directing posting of the bid letting, all for the wastewater treatment plant biosolids transfer pump replacement. Introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number sixteen, Oakdale Boulevard extension. This agreement is for the design and creation, the, this agreement is for the design and certain construction-related services for the extension of Oakdale Boulevard from Jones Boulevard West to the proposed Clear Creek Amana Community School District Elementary School Street Intersection and for mass grating of the Oakdale Boulevard corridor through and ending just beyond the northwest corner of the school property. This agreement is not to exceed one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving a professional services agreement with MMS Consultants, Inc. Regarding the Oakdale Boulevard extension. Introduced for adoption by council member Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or discussion on item sixteen?
Have we talked about how, what the total estimated cost of this will be?
No, we haven't, because that'll be part of that contract process with the engineering firm.
After they.
Yeah.
After this, so this is one hundred and sixty-nine, this is going to be an expensive project.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions or comments?
MMS is also doing the work for the developer south of the school site as well. And there was one other one we talked about, Scott.
Oaks's property.
Oaks's property, also to the east of this. So, one of the advantages of MMS is they have a lot of data on this project because they'd already done some work for the city, but they're also working for the two private developers on both sides. So, that'll be very helpful in making sure that everything works together.
What's the length of this stretch of Oakdale that we're talking about? Just a quarter mile?
Yeah, it's not that long.
Will the new school site be closer to the Tiffin exit or to the nine sixty-five exit?
Nine sixty-five, yeah. It's really very close to nine sixty-five.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number seventeen, interior drainage modeling, stormwater pump stations five, eight, and ten. This agreement is for the creation of an interior drainage model for the area served by stormwater pump stations numbers five, eight, and ten. The, the agreement is not to exceed forty-seven thousand dollars. Can we have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with HR Green, Inc. For the interior drainage modeling, stormwater pump stations five, eight, and ten. Introduced for adoption by council member Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussions on this item? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eighteen, Colony Fenn Erosion Project. This agreement is for correcting the gullies and erosion near the fens, stopping the fens from dewatering, and providing a plan for restoring native vegetations, native vegetation post project. This agreement is not to exceed thirty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. The resolution, please.
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with EOR, Inc. For the Colony Fenn Erosion Project. Introduced for adoption by council member Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any thoughts on this item?
I, I guess I might. I, I guess I, my thought is I have no idea where this is at.
Oh, this is the New West Land Use Area.
Yep.
That's pretty big.
It's in the, um, area that the city purchased, which would be, um, north of the woodlands that is adjacent to the, um, Oakdale Boulevard, which is north of the school site that we just talked about, so it's in the northern boundary there, and, um, this is part of those grounds that we purchased, one of which was specifically for, um, the fens, um, because they are a very unusual environmental feature, and I think there, Sherry, is there only one other in Johnson County? Yeah, I believe, yeah, the Chia Fenn, so this is a very unusual, um, circumstance that we have here, and that was one of the reasons that so many, um, people along with the city were interested in protecting them, including the, the former owners of the property.
Excuse my ignorance, my daughter's a water engineer, I probably should have figured all that out.
It'll be a park area.
Yeah, it'll be part of the overall park, and, um, I, Sherry, are we up to seventy acres almost that we purchased? Sixty?
All right, any other questions?
Would encourage you to go out and impress your daughter by looking.
Can you get there?
Yep.
Don't, don't go out there in the rain, I assume.
You will not get there on your bike, I guarantee.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number eighteen, we have two parts to this item, uh, Brown Deer Deck Board Replacement. This project will replace deck boards, several stairway post steps, and about a dozen deck stringers at the Brown Deer Golf Course for safety and aesthetic reasons. This is not to exceed sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars, and we will start with a quotation report.
Yes, we had three quotes for this project, um, one of them is by the same contractor, but two different types of composite decking. We didn't, didn't have, we're just having a hard time getting a lot of interest right now in these smaller projects, um, um, at our various locations. Um, so they ranged from, um, the high one of eighty-four thousand, four thirty, down to sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty, and we're recommending the, um, award to, um, AT Construction at six, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty.
All right, thank you very much for that, Sherry. Could we have the, uh, resolution, please?
Resolution accepting quotes and approving contract with AT Construction for Brown Deer Deck Board Replacement, introduced for adoption by councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Questions or discussion, comments?
This will take place in July, I think, I don't know if I put that in my memo, um, working around any events we already have on the books, and then future events, if we do book any additional events, they'll know that there'll be work being done on the decking.
Is the current decking composite, or is that?
It is, it is, um, some of the original composite that came out, and it's twenty years old.
The bad composite, years ago.
It's a little beat up, I was out there the other day. I'm glad you're, glad you're replacing it.
Any other comments? All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross. Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item number twenty, street name change. In order for the street names to align with future ownership, the developer of, uh, the Auburn Ridge area desires to rename Leon Circle in Auburn Ridge to Nathan Court, and Nathan Court to Leon Circle. All right, could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution changing the name of the street known as Leon Circle to Nathan Court, and Nathan Court to Leon Circle, introduced for adoption by councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn.
We don't care, right? Fair enough.
The developer's paying all costs associated with this also, so, there's some recording fees, some public hearing fees, all that, or that, and so normally we, you know, discourage this, but they, there are no houses built, so it's not like somebody's going to, uh, keep their address changed, if that had happened, we would not allow it, but.
There are no streets built.
Right.
Forget about houses.
Do we have, though, just standards on what streets can be called and named?
I think we, the engineering department just tries to make sure that we're not close, or, or, you know, public safety doesn't want, you know, like, the old Brown Deers, those are kind of hard to remember, and Noel Court, you know, but we don't really do that anymore.
Traditionally, we have not, I mean, the developer obviously puts them on the plaits, and we don't unless, um, it has something, as Kevin said, similar, um, that would be in another part of town, so that you wouldn't know exactly where you're going.
Good.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes.
Thank you, Leoni, by the way, Leon.
Leon, Leoni, Leon.
Like the Billy Joel song, Mommy Leoni. I dated myself.
I thought it was Leon.
Living on a street that gets mispronounced all the time.
John's like, oh.
He's like, forget it.
That's his development.
All right. Well, regardless, resolution is approved, all ayes. Item twenty-one, rental permit fees. This amends the rental permit fee schedule to a flat fifty-dollar rental permit fee, regardless of building type or ownership, in order to simplify the fee schedule. Could we have the resolution, please?
Resolution amending the twenty-twenty-two schedule of rental permit fees to be collected pursuant to chapter one, four, five of the Code of Ordinances, two thousand and eleven, of the City of Corleville, introduced for adoption by councilmember Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item twenty-two, American Rescue Plan Act beneficiaries. The following will receive a portion of the city's share of funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, otherwise known as ARPA. We are allocating five thousand to Houses into Homes, two thousand into our Utility Assistance Program, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, two hundred thousand to the Johnson County Housing Trust Fund, and thirty thousand dollars to the Johnson County Direct Assistance Program. Resolution, please.
Resolution designating certain beneficiaries of funding through the city's share of funding received through the American Rescue Plan Act, introduced for adoption by councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Gross. Any questions or discussion on this item?
How much left?
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight thousand, that is.
Forty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Item twenty-three, I would consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I would motion, we approve consent calendar as presented, items A through X.
Moved by Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Knutson.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Item number twenty-four, city administrators' report.
I have nothing at this time, mayor.
Okey-dokey. Item twenty-five, mayor's report, I don't have much this evening, um, just a few short things. Um, first of all, I wanted to just mention that the next performance at the Corleville Center for the Performing Arts is Spamalot, that will be, uh, June tenth through the twelfth, and this will be, uh, production that features high school students, local high school students, and I have to say that I will have a cameo in that show. I will be, I've been asked to come out of my theater retirement, and I will do this in service to my community. Um, memorizing lines is a lot more difficult now than it was when I was a teenager, so, but it should be a really fun show, the kids, the kids, I, I've been to rehearsal, and the kids are phenomenal, it's always amazing to me how much talent we, we have in this community. So, um, that will be, uh, coming up on June tenth through the twelfth at the CCPA. Also wanted to mention that early voting for the June seventh primary is going on now. You can vote early at the auditor's office through June sixth, um, weekdays, uh, eight to five. They will be closed for Memorial Day, and there will be a satellite voting location at the Corleville Public Library on Saturday, June fourth, from ten to four, so be sure to get out and, and vote. And that is all I have, um, city attorneys' report.
I have nothing.
Okay. Committee and council members' reports. I don't remember who goes first at this time, we'll start with you, councilmember Knutson.
Um, uh, I hope your show is not the next one, Madam Mayor, uh, there's Beatles versus Stones tomorrow.
Oh, no, no, I'm not in that one.
Uh, well, I mean, but, but you said the next show, and we have, I, we have, my wife and I have tickets to, uh, to that tomorrow night, so another, another reminder. Um, quick comment on, uh, the events today, another horrific, um, um, murders in a school, of course. Had to look up some numbers, um, try to get things in perspective, I know you gave some, it's a complete coincidence that it's gun awareness, and it's hard not to be aware of that today, forty-five thousand or so, uh, gun-related deaths in the U.S. annually, um, about, uh, twenty thousand of those are murders, some suicide, accidental, et cetera, but, um, forty-three hundred of those are children, um, as we saw today, our death rate from guns in this country are about a tenth, or, or, Australia's death rates are about a tenth of, of ours, they have very strict gun laws. I, I'd just like to contrast that in my mind with Benghazi, where we, um, had four, um, Americans killed tragically, um, and with that, we had, um, ten investigations, seven congressional probes, thirty-three congressional hearings, and, um, you know, a lot, a lot of our attention, and I can guarantee you, with forty-three hundred children dying a year from guns, we won't have anything near that in this country, and that depresses my wife and I, her more than me, but depresses both of us. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you for that. Councilmember Gross.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, first, I, I wish I would have said this, when they were here, I wanted, uh, to give Anjali and Anish Low a shout-out, a couple of weeks ago, last week, uh, they were honored by the City of Iowa City Human Rights Commission for winning a Youth Human Rights Award for their work and advocacy they've done on behalf of Asian-Americans, and they were, uh, some of the leading forces behind, uh, next year, the school district will have the Chinese New Year off, for Lunar New Years for that, uh, family, so Asian-Asian can celebrate that and have that day off, so they're rewarded by that, so, uh, congratulations to them. I will echo too what, what Mike said, uh, you know, obviously, as an educator who works in a school, and, and, uh, when I heard today the news, it was just, uh, as it has been devastating, and, um, from my understanding, you know, as a local entity, there's not much we can, uh, do, which is unfortunate, because I feel we would have the votes to, uh, do something if we were able to do so by, uh, the powers that be. Lastly, uh, I do, all right, and I posit, I do want to give a, a huge shout-out and, uh, say congrats to our local high school seniors, uh, Corlevillians at West City and Liberty, who today, uh, had their last day of high school, and who will graduate, uh, this coming Sunday at the Extreme Arena, so I've got, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, my, I have four children, four young children who are all in school, and, um, I caught the, the, the headline of the shooting tonight, just right before heading here, and I just couldn't, I could not help but think, where can our children be safe? Where? If not at school, then where? How did we arrive to this point in time when we cannot protect our children? Uh, my heart goes out to the family who is affected by the event that takes place tonight in Texas, and to all of the family that have been affected by gun violence. As a country, we need to do something about it, and as a community, just like Ms. said, if we can do something about it, we probably have the power, the vote, to make change, but we can't because of state and federal laws. Um, what we can do is that we can hold each other accountable, um, turn out to vote, vote for candidate that worked for you, for your safety, for your children's safety, for generation to come, safety. That's how you make change, and it's had to start at the local level. So you might think that your vote will not do anything, will not make any change, think again. One vote at a time, that's how we make positive change. On the lie of helping community, um, the Direct Assistance Program at the county had extended its deadline to this Friday, May twenty-seven, at two P.M. So anyone that has been excluded from the funding, um, please apply. You can go to the Corleville Public Library, to the, uh, Human and Health Services Building, um, to North Liberty Library, Iowa City Library, The Pantry, um, there's help available. The mobile clinic will be at the Corleville Public Library this, um, Saturday, May twenty-eighth, from eleven-thirty to two-thirty, to offer health, free health screening services, so take advantage of that. I also wanted to let the community know that The Pantry will be closed for Memorial Day, so this Saturday, we will, we will not be open, so if you need food, please reach out to us now, come to us now, um. They're open tomorrow from five to seven, Thursday from ten to noon, um, and then we also do home delivery service, so please reach out, um, since we close this Saturday, and that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, and last but not least, councilmember Goodrich.
Okay, I also would like to say that my heart goes out to the school, the first responders of families of, um, Uvalde, Texas, and, um, such a sad occurrence there, and, uh, we pray for all of them. On another note, the American Legion is having a Memorial Day service, like they do every year at the cemetery, and it starts at eleven fifteen A.M., and it's a wonderful service, invite everyone to attend. Also, in getting ready for summer, from May thirty-first to June tenth, the Recreation Center will provide one replacement pass for free for a lost rec pass, and anyone in fifth grade or older is eligible for a rec pass, and the first one is free, and there are periodic free weeks throughout the year for replacement pass passes, including beginning of summer, beginning of the school year, and after winter break. Replacement passes are usually ten dollars each at other times of the year. And then another announcement, the Corleville Community Aquatic Center opens, uh, Saturday, June fourth. Hours are Monday through Friday, eleven A.M. to seven P.M., and Saturday and Sunday is noon to six P.M. The price is six dollars per person. The indoor pool will be closed starting Tuesday. The indoor pool will be closed starting Tuesday, May thirty-first, for deck renovation and pool painting. And that's estimated to be reopening at the end of August. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Removed.
Moved by Gross, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Our meeting is adjourned.